If I could find my old racing, uh, obviously, I would be good if I.
We had, we had, you know, I had.
Well, now, what's the name?
Oh, I'm on fire so good.
We did have. And, uh, cooking. And we were both like together. Uh, we're looking at all that.
It's different.
Oh, we have St. George. So it's actually St. George. It's two hours. Yes. It's also, I think, very much free.
Speaking of that, we're.
Uh, I was, I was sorry. Well, that's fair. Okay. Well, it's not here. How's the rest? Uh, most of it's from the rock. The one I thought you said is there. Yeah, there. Uh, oh, yeah. Yeah. Good job. Yeah. I'm sitting next to the other small pocket coming off. But no, we're in about. I don't know. But where are we? That's short for you. Then we've already got some, uh, requests. Like, say, we work with Barrio County. We have, uh, once more, uh, say, once more. And then Barrio County comes in and says, okay, let's start right here and drill up. All that stuff. And they come right down this little way over here about, you know, stressful. Thanks for the record, that's true. And then Barrio County, uh, do the thing in Barrio County. We're supposed to be, uh, in Barrio County. And I'm trying to, well, when we're actually, Robert, I had, I had, Michelle, we're trying to get started. I'll do it by the way, or good time, good time. Appreciate it, man. Down is home town hall. I'll tell you what, I didn't have to show those things.
Yeah, support. I was telling them they need the funds.
We showed up, we went forward.
I had to.
You can't find it.
Sorry, huh? People, uh, go, we're best of. Yeah, we're, we're, you know. I'm there. Big one, Barrio County. Uh, right, yes, we, we all was laughing about that. Cause he was the worst thing we had and because it turned it, uh, turned it all through. Thank you, big surprise to that guy. Yeah. I don't. I didn't show us my phone, but that was, so we got respect and, too.
Are you ready to make it back to you?
Okay, they, in here. Test the water.
It's all moved out here.
Never hear the waters, they get.
There's a ton of, he just talked about.
I know, that's great. I will give you. Okay, can you hear me now? It came with Paul. Fourth century, June the fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
We're gonna begin with the ICA, the inter, intergovernmental agreement for Barrow County toward election. Nothing has changed on that. The, um, intergovernmental agreement is one dollar per registered voter and stadium. And Barrow County will be facilitating all of the elections for us.
Okay, all right.
How about cut? While we're cutting up, uh, many questions, they turn to our package. But we're still being, we'll vote here and vote home places. At, at State of Almond, it's kind of in the fire hall. We don't, unless you want to vote early, then you don't fly. But otherwise, you'll, it'll just keep down some. Problem, county issues. Be done electronically.
Test it, one, two. Sound like I'm here now.
Any questions on ICA? Number two is the proposed FY eighteen nineteen budget. Sure, our budget meetings, we went over the budgets. I have prepared a copy of the, um, resulting from the last budget meeting where we added two thousand dollars for the site and reduced that two thousand dollars to the rental department and their building. All the other changes that we discussed prior to, nothing else has changed. Any questions on that? Okay, the next item is the Georgia Department of Corrections contract for renewal for work details. There's a copy in front of you. The amount has not changed for the fiscal year. One thing that I would like about Mayor Council to take into consideration is, um, that you would like us to request some changes in the contract in regards to damaging of items and no sex of them.
What, as far as the damaging of items?
Yes, that like a threshold where if it's in excess of, say, two hundred and fifty dollars, that the city is not liable. If it's done, how to elect or out of, you know, just not be in care. Because the city has, uh, a lot of, um, expenses based on items that are damaged. When they are rolling grass, when they use rockets and chill or just tearing up the equipment and adjust on. So it's just something to think about. Those are a couple of things that we noticed throughout the years that caused problems. Anything else that you might have, please let me.
So, uh, are you asking, should we add those to items?
Correct. We have a copy of the contract in here, um, with your permission and with your guidance. I would like to know if you would like to add those to the current contract or attempt to add it. Not to Georgia Department of Corrections, to add those to the current contract.
I particularly like the, uh, second, it's next number. Want them all?
Anything else that you all might think? You know, we can attempt to ask those questions and attempt to add those to the contract. You are, you are, you sort of anything that you have seen in the past, you know, related to the department of corrections is on the table. So we're going to have to go ahead and.
Well, it's the, okay, then that, I mean, so this is more as opposed. So if we add that, or is that gonna reflect on what we're going to choose tonight? Or will we get it into them in time to look at all?
Yeah, I think you have some discussions and see if we can add that to the contract. And then you guys can vote on it based on what their answer is.
If you can get it back in time for us to do it.
Right.
Or, or we'll just have to take it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
Next item is Sid Rancin, Ken Wilson, um, in reference to provisions and requirements to convert crawl space into slab and reserving sufficient for latest data.
Okay, come on, man.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Sid Rancin. We have a subdivision, the latest statement that we bought, we're trying to get started. Uh, as a matter of fact, for it was just approved throughout all our, and we're about to get going on that. One of the provisions of the seventy, it's on the plaque is that there would be nothing, no slabs, crawl space only. And we've talked it over. We had a meeting, talked with Michelle and, uh, House Shipwood. And, uh, we worked out a solution we think is okay to be approved. That we would do the slabs, but we would do an eighteen inch, uh, water table around the front and the sides of the house. It will look like a crawl space, but it will be a slab, which is what our builder was wanting to do. And so the city gets the look that they want and our builder gets the construction that he wants. And, uh, now, House seemed to think that was a good solution for everyone. And we would ask that you work with us with that one change on the plaque and, uh.
But now, we will keep the whole of this budget for, uh, basement will stay in.
For basement, yeah.
It'll stay in effect.
Well, you know, that, the builder himself picks out which basements are slabbed and he's going to do. I mean, we haven't specified that and he hasn't specified that, but I don't see why that would be part of.
I mean, kind of, kind of said.
Right.
Kind of, with the fall.
Yeah.
But I mean, not the part, not the, not the part of the, uh, the first agreement. I mean, the proposal by yourself. But, um, I mean, that's what we do in the city, so.
Yes.
In my opinion.
Uh, y'all guys take care of the situation.
Yes, well, we have the outfall of design and it is, uh, has been approved by Jordan. And you're getting ready, as a matter of fact, I've got two bids in now and expecting one more, uh, to get ready to get started with the outfall. It was all followed and adopted.
Okay.
Like I said, Jordan has proved. Thank you, sir. Any questions? So there won't be any crawl space. So it will look like a crawl space because of what it's.
And, you know, during cross street, um, same, probably same type of foundation.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Tony Garment, drainage issues, and ideas for future renovations.
Okay, Tony. I'll just give a quick overview. Um, eight thirty first evening, June first morning, we had a rain event. Sue was destroyed, she was backed up, backload and came into my building. Right now, the insurance luckily, because they identified it as a backlog. Uh, they are going to cover this, but we're looking at forty, around forty-three thousand dollars of damage. All the floors have to be removed, all the basements have to be removed. Server probably come in and do all the work to get it resolved. So, and in that case, I'd like to present some ideas to the city to help prevent this kind of, this kind of damage. One thing is, is to monitor rain flow, the city. Have the maintenance department, whoever can monitor the rain gauge, maybe on each side of the town, the rain events that we have. That's something simple. I think also we need to have some sort of log on maintenance of structures. I think they need to be checked. I know the, the structure down in my building had about, I don't know, about a foot or so of, uh, hard dirt and gravel. So there's nowhere, the water's having to go clear about that much to get out. And third, the, the bit that we need to do, yeah, just to kind of be ready for the future, because the population isn't growing. And sooner or later, you're gonna be probably in charge of having to keep up your storm, stormwater management. We need an inventory of the system. Garment Land Surveying, I will donate my services to inventory the system. I think the city can take that information, send it to wherever their engineering company is, or if we find a super, and to have them do a study. That way they can circle the question marks in the city for storm. If, if we can sit there and think it could be anywhere, it could be the whole system, it could be two or three places, it could be the exit. It could be as simple as how control structure or making something different. Uh, if we inventory it, find where the problems are, then we can help them back problems in the future. I know it affected me and I know it affected the cast that's had a lot of water on their property, too. I would have never guessed my building would flood. You've been here a long time. Has that building ever flooded in your knowledge? The pharmacy building?
Not that I know of.
And when I rebuilt it, I didn't see any flood damage. The only water damage I found was from the fire on the right side when we had a fire back there, I guess about fifteen, twenty years ago. So, um, I think that's some simple things we can do. Like I said, the surveying, I'm gonna donate my, my time. And inventory, because I know it's not a huge system. Inventory inverse, the size of pipes, the structure itself. And an engineer can take that and use GIS information to figure out what boxes are getting too much water, what boxes need to be bigger, pipes need to be bigger. We just need to know. That doesn't mean you can fix it now, but when the, when the time for grants come up, you can start saying, we need to fix this and this and this. So that's my ideas. Like I said, one idea was to monitor rainfall, which we really need to do. We need to know how to rainfall. Two was the maintenance, to keep a log of the maintenance of the, of the boxes. And three is to do an inventory and study of the system itself. So that's what I recommend for it. And like I said, I just want my building to be able to get back to, be back to normal.
I, we hate to have, but you know, uh, but again, one forty-eight inches in about hour and a half. Well, you know, this is forty-five year, we have forty-five, fifty year, a hundred year floods. We got forty-five year, about ninety-four.
And we've had works. I've been out front here and worse events. We've actually seen water go up to the brick line. But the last time I had video of water getting almost to my doors was because there was blown debris and stuff on top of the, the drop outlets. It wasn't even, it's just because things were blown on top and it doesn't take much to stop it up. It just takes a little bit to stop the flow. Once the flow stopped, it backs out. So, and understanding my background, I'm a level two designer for, uh, road patrol. I understand storm system. Uh, I'm not an engineer. I've heard that engineer handle that part, but a lot of it is, some of it is just simple maintenance. Some of it is gonna be, it may just be one spot in the system that needs to be, to be, to be covered. And like I said, forty thousand dollars is a lot of damage.
Well, it's, it's big to be with that.
Yeah.
So, that'd be no point.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I just, that's my advice to the city, that we can try to get those three things moving forward. I hopefully see a lot of cost in that. Like I said, I'm gonna give my, donate my, my cost, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Brilliant.
Thank you, Tony. We did want to let you know that we have been in touch with our building inspector as well as our engineering.
He has got a meeting and he said that we got to get to a meeting about.
Yes.
Finding.
Other options as well. Yes, excellent.
Great, though.
Thank you.
Next on ICA is the Pineda Mextral alcohol permit and how to work with the church of city.
Governor, they want me to speak on their behalf. I know we're neighbors. My building's right next to them. And, uh, my background is I have worked at a Mexican restaurant for about four years. Uh, those focused during college. I also do, uh, I do multiple alcohol surveys for multiple jurisdictions in the area. We go all the way to Atlanta, we go all the way to Atlanta for our alcohol surveys, but the closer ones are Athens Park County and, uh, City of Wanda. And, um, one thing I, I would say, one is that I think they, one for adding them here. I mean, when they moved in, you know, I don't expect out of a restaurant next door to me. I love these people, they're really, really great people. They've been here now, we've seen what they're all about, we've seen them work, we've seen their families. I guess that their food is tremendous, but there is, after two years of business and, and running a, a business and food service is hard enough already. It's one of the hardest businesses to run, running a restaurant. I worked in food service for five years and, uh, and I do know that it's, it's hard to do, even with really good establishments, I've seen them close down. One thing that's hard to do is, is for a Mexican restaurant, it's not having an alcohol permit to sell and consume on premises. I did some, uh, research, um, like I said, I do these surveys. I called the, um, Athens Park County Licensing Department and I called the City of Wanda. Cause I wanted to get more information. When I do these surveys, I submit them. I don't know how it turns out, I don't know who gets accepted, who gets denied. So I called them and I asked them for their specifics. And the specifics for Athens Park County, Athens, the City of Wanda, was that they go by the state law. That's what they go by. Athens Park County, using the state law, says that a church for A D E F licenses, which is all their alcohol licenses, restaurants are exempted. They said that if it, if it's consumed on the premises, sold and consumed on premises, they're exempted, there is no distance requirement. City of Wanda, the same thing. They have, they go by the state law. I called them, they reached out, called me back and said, the way we do it is no distance for consumption on premises around the church, so there's no distance. And that's, that started making sense to me. One of the other things a lot of jurisdictions do is, um, City of Atlanta, DeKalb County, Warburg, uh, parts of, uh, cities in Gwinnett require that the church be in a church grounds on its own certain property. But if it's in a large or, or retail establishment, it, it doesn't affect the businesses around it. Now, that's for people who are selling steel and, and stuff coming in and out of premises. Even that affects them, that they have to be a church ground. I talked to Lewis today, he's the one who kind of oversees the numbers coming in. He manages, I guess, multiple restaurants. We're seeing about a twenty to thirty percent, um, effect in sales right now from not being able to do that. He keeps up with customer reviews, uh, that he has online through multiple sources that people do reviews, and this is a major deal. I got involved with it through the Business Association. When I, when, uh, and I brought it to the Business Association, we talked about it, we all believe that they should come back in front of you guys and speak about this. What we're trying to do is try to have the city come forward and, and give it these guys and try to come up with a, uh, a realistic approach, trying to get these guys able to sell. And like I said, under state laws, consumption on premises, there's no distance. So if you're guided by the state laws, that is, and, 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 you know, definitely look into it yourself, um, but that is the state law. We'd like for them to have a true application. We heard that there was a meeting at some point. I, I wasn't aware of the actual meeting day. They wasn't aware of the meeting day and I think they said the church represent, and I don't think this Mexican restaurant, they would really represent itself. We would like for them to be able to represent themselves in that matter. And I do know that there's support, there's a lot of support for the Business Association. We didn't have anybody that had come up and, and, and said that they don't, we should have, and everybody said, you know, let's let them move forward with it and see what happens. We don't want to have to go to number petitions to see how many people are supporting, but we'd really like the city to work these guys, because they're becoming, uh, those tables in this community with this, with this restaurant. We've always been there, we love our food, but we, we gotta help them out, we're just working people, trying to have families, and we really want to see them be able to just have a chance. Sit from two and four.
Thank you.
Does the city have any, um, information on, where's your, your guidelines on your, on your, uh?
Uh, you know. Long as you're not here, not at all in here, do you know?
Most cities have their own ordinances regarding, uh, distance requirements. I do not know if the City of Stadiums ordinance requires regarding distances. And the State Department of Revenue regulations regarding alcohol recently went through a major overhaul. And without having any of that front end, you know.
Twenty seventeen, I think it was. It's been Athens Park County changers over two on premises was when the law changed, you know. So, um, but any, I mean, any questions, any comments? I mean, uh, they're just trying to figure out where to go affecting the business, um, church. We can't get in touch with the church. Actually, the First Baptist preacher gave me the number of the preacher to call. He was at the business meeting. He reached out to me and texted me the information, so I can find that now. And, uh, the biggest thing about the churches, and let's, let's put it one thing, I'm the pastor of our church. I don't drink, all right? This has nothing to do, this, this doesn't benefit me or, or I have a loss in it or no gain. I just see a business that had people walking out on the seat of my, have a business, see if people walk out on weekends and can't compete. And that's not what we want here, Sam. The Business Association, we're businesses, have a fair chance to do business. If that means don't sell on Wednesday night, don't sell on Sunday, they've already said, they're proud, well, Sunday is comfortable, the church, they don't want to sell on Sundays. So I think we have a party that really wants to, to get together with you guys and figure something out, but this is livelihood, this is, this, this is their business. And like I said, I don't drink. I'm not going, I go there for my sweet tea at the Giddy every day.
Well, we're, uh, much of us have discussed, and we are gonna look into it.
Yeah.
Uh, normally, normally we hold everybody by the minute.
Oh, but we are gonna.
I didn't taste it, whatever.
Excellent.
But, uh, you know, living here, the whole back in Arkansas, I do everything myself, but we're gonna look at legalities for ourselves. Probably won't hold on, but on Tuesday night, because it's probably everything we want back, but we're definitely going to address it.
And that's all we want, is to move forward and try to address it, not lose guys.
That's what, I mean, we're, a bunch of, we can't talk.
Yeah.
One, one of the, uh, alcohol period, white, they have, uh, yeah, and, and yes, uh, a year or so ago, uh, it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
You helped us. We will.
That's, that's all we want to do.
I, I would like to, I would like to, yeah, that is, that we really appreciate your restaurant. I think they're, and, you know, I, I, I was here when, uh, this came up and it was a, a very strong church group that came and, and, uh, if, if it's gonna be readdressed, you know, I mean, be done in such a way that it balances between the big church and the restaurant. Working together.
And that's what we, we like to, but we just want to go forward, we don't want to go down, but we will turn it over to policy, get them a little bit, we will. If it's feasible.
Yeah. I think we were together, I really did. All right, awesome, thank you.
Next is White McCormick, who's there our board area council on police department, they told me, and the city's policy changes regarding the opening of new businesses, leak and let, and orderly, I guess.
I just wanna talk, um, I just wanna talk about the, the motion that was made, uh, last month. And voted on and approved by the council to keep the police department. And, you know, I was looking into this and I knew, I knew I was outnumbered. I knew there wasn't gonna be any support from the city whatsoever, so I was okay with that. But, um, it just, I just felt kind of slighted, um, on, on the item, on the agenda. Cause I had no knowledge of it, we hadn't discussed it and, you know, I didn't, I didn't feel like it was, it was handled correctly. I got a copy of Robert's Rules of Order and I started looking into the, the rules of order that govern our meetings. And I found that the motion was mishandled because there wasn't any discussion, there wasn't any discussion allowed. In the interest of time, a lot of times you don't have any discussion when there's unanimous, um, vote on a. In the interest of time, a lot of times you don't have any discussion when there's unanimous vote on an issue. But this wasn't the case, and there wasn't, the motion was made, and it was quickly brought to a vote without any discussion. On top of it being mishandled, it was also out of order. And when you look it up on page three forty-three of this book, a motion that's made and passed out of order, it's basically what it says in here, is that the motion that we made contradicted the city's charter. We already have the police department, it's already here. We can stay here all night and vote to keep everything the city has, let's keep the backup. Let's keep, you know, we could do that all night. It was unnecessary, and it lacked discussion, it lacked the integrity that I think we're looking for to return to the city. And I kept digging, and I saw that because the motion was out of order, it's null and void. There's no recalling the motion, there's no rescinding the motion, there's no recall and revoke. It's basically null and void. And I only found that out because I had to go get this book and start looking into how, you know, how to be a better, how to be a better leader and start following the rules that we're supposed to be following. So with that, I would just like to hear some discussion from the council and see how they feel about it.
Well, since you brought it up, I didn't know this was on the table until I saw it, till yesterday. We discussed it the whole, all day, we were covering March, May. And then you was, we left it April, for you to go to the chief and get more information, and to judge me.
Right.
And you didn't make the workshop that night because you, I mean, it's everything you did not hurt to make. So there again, I felt that with voting, that it didn't mean that much to you to not bring the information that you promised you was going to bring to us.
I'll come home.
I know, it's my first time, he got to say what he want to say, let's stop last night. No, no, it's not, no, it's serious.
We were here, most of this is all that needed.
No, I said, I was here, and it went down properly. We voted, and it was over with, we discussed it four months. And that was enough.
It had no legal effect, it had no damage.
Why don't the people get to vote on it?
Yeah.
Come on, this is not a, you know, a kingdom, you know, we don't have kings and queens and stuff like this and say, well, it's like this. Why the hell get the people to vote on it?
What you want to vote on, what did you want to vote on?
The world, we keep the police, we want to save money enough.
That's what you, that's what you want to do.
We give them a ten thousand dollar rate, we give everything you, we give it place part, we give it roof with everything you want.
People want to know the numbers, Mayor. Why would you want to send them without getting the information from you? It's because you had to delay it one month, if you had to delay it one month to get his numbers? Wouldn't that been a little bit more transparent?
We already had the numbers, I tell you, you talked to the sheriff personally.
And he's not making such a difference.
You said you talked to him.
I told him, I talked to the sheriff, and he told me specifically not to give his numbers. Dwight needed to get the official number, and Perry knows that.
Okay, the issue, let me refocus the discussion back to where it used to be. The issue was not whether or not the city supports the county doing our policing. That's not the issue. The issue is how the city mishandled the motion, and how the motion was out of order. We didn't need to vote, we didn't need to vote on that. We could stay here all night and vote to keep the things that the city wants to keep, but it's not necessary.
You tied us up for several months on this. You say that we didn't discuss it, you discussed it in meetings.
I'm talking about the motion.
No, and the thing is, it was on the agenda?
It just said.
It was, it was absolutely no reason why we could make the decision based on discussions we've already had to vote to say that we chose not to do, have the county do it.
Well.
So did you look at numbers before he decided to vote? Did you see the paperwork from the county that said, this is what people did?
You keep on asking me about the numbers, do you have the numbers?
No, that's what I'm asking you.
You are, I have asked. I have talked to.
This is special, totally.
But then why did you get a different number than the number he told her was there?
Y'all not on the, it's pretty.
Then you got truth, you got.
Come on up, come on up. I don't have some order in here, regardless of what everybody says. Now, I think, I think it was handled correctly. That's, that's fine, you don't want to worry. But that issue has been voted on, and it's passed. And I didn't bring the motion up. Okay, you want to discuss something else?
Yes, from now on, when we, when the city entertains motion, let's have some discussion. About motion, about motions in particular, have a focused discussion on motion. My whole point, my whole point about this whole thing is that we didn't even need to make a motion. I would have fully conceded the whole thing.
It was hanging.
It's still hanging overs. In seventeen months, we're getting a new council and a new mayor, so it's going to hang overs. It's not dead. So all I was saying was let's entertain the idea of beginning to talk and communicate with one another. And that's, that's my whole point, is that nobody is effectively communicating about the issue. I don't care that I was outnumbered four to one, it doesn't matter. I didn't have an attachment to the outcome of the situation, and I still don't. And I can still do that and support Chief Johnson and the police department. It doesn't matter how the job gets done. I was entertaining the idea of saving money, and that is the bottom line. There's hundreds, thousands of dollars.
All of this has been said over and over again, can we leave the bar?
Well, I guess we can, anyway. My whole point was that we need, now we need to start.
May I come up to the front seat for a second?
You're not on the, you're not.
No, you know, the whole issue is, is regardless of the police department. That was an ambush attack. I mean, it's, it's nothing short of. That was not, it was not specified on the agenda, it was not. You can't be that vague and then have a small forum of city council make decisions. And one member had no idea as to what the vote is going to be, and then he springed it on people. That is his point. That has nothing to do with the police department. Nothing to do with the police department whatsoever. Nothing to do with the police department, has to do with Robert's rules and the way things are processed. You don't come up with a vote and then not inform.
How do I answer you? It's a quiet thing.
Fine, I said my piece, thank you.
You've listed all the agenda, you wanted that public discussion on the agenda as well.
I beg you to quiet it down.
The next thing I would like to discuss is the city's policy regarding the opening of new businesses. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure about this, but did not the city have knowledge of businesses that were opening up at one point in time? Like if a city, if a business applicant applied, or was the council not informed? Isn't that the way we used to do it, or not?
That's not the way.
Has that been done?
Except in unique situations.
If you look at this chart like this, tells you what goes for. Res zoning.
Okay. No, I'm just saying, you know, we got a, you know, we got a gun store, we got a pawn shop, we got a massage parlor. And, you know, although I don't oppose any of these businesses, just the mere mentioning of, you know, those three names, it appears like we're asleep at the wheel. And, you know, I don't know if somebody comes and applies for a business, you know, is it just go through the city's administration?
When you started your business, would you want even your business to have to go through a review like this?
All I ask was that the policy.
It, it hasn't changed.
It has not changed.
Sir, that's unfair to Tina Nash, to call her a massage parlor. That's very unfair. She does women's facials, tans, she's a reputable lighter therapist.
Massage therapist.
I'm sorry.
I was unaware of.
Very final.
Yes. So.
Are you familiar with zoning that?
Yes. And I know, I know when a business comes to us with an alcohol licensing, you know, rezoning issue. I know, I know we have to talk about that, but I'm just asking a general question, that's.
Okay.
So, they did come, I won't say every business that came in town stood before us. But we knew what they were going to do, they explained in detail, and we knew it. All the businesses that liked us named over, I knew we had them in town. When somebody on the street says, hey, I heard y'all about this, I heard y'all about that. We knew nothing of it.
But, but businesses don't, you know, in other, in some these points.
It is not a requirement. They don't have to stand before us, but the majority of them would come in, they called, we knew what they would do.
Yeah, they were promoting the business.
And, if you don't have a business, there you go, promote it. But we knew about it, if they didn't come before us, somebody in city hall would have said that we had them in business. I mean, we can't go talk to people and welcome them in later if we don't know that either.
I mean, I would agree with y'all too. I mean, if I'm not, I want to make policy, I want to get my policy, but, yeah, I would like to know. I mean, I would like to know if this company, you know, if only simple, signs off on that intention. If, you know, that's their job to set. But everybody, it could be our job to look at and review it, we go back, I mean.
But it's never been there. If, if we have something like a alcohol providing establishment or something like that, maybe I could do that. But, but if Dwight is going to perpetrate to make dog houses, and he wants to have the business, he would just come and get a business license, and that's, that's the end of it. He's welcome to come and do a presentation about his, his business, but it's, but it's not required.
I know, I didn't say it was required.
I wasn't trying to start a party.
No, we're not, it's a good, it's a good question.
If someone comes in and says, let's sell a property for this business, it would not hurt that they, I mean, I would drop in our box, say, go buy, welcome the new business, they're in such, such a good price. That way we know, we don't hear it three months later from somebody outside.
I think, I think we can make that out.
Yeah, so what White is asking, and that is not.
But we don't have to, we don't have the requirement that, and we never had the requirement that a regular business license has to come and get our permission.
We know that, in our jurisdiction, but it hurts.
We have respect.
No, yeah.
I guess, I have a small, go ahead, Sean.
I just wanted to suggest, moving forward, what we do on a monthly basis is provide any new businesses, send those same business licenses to the council, so that you guys are over there on the other side.
That would be great.
And then that keeps everyone in the loop, because really by law, we can't prohibit anything except for more adult entertainment. I have a rule, so we can go ahead, run reports, and keep everyone in the loop of what new businesses are coming to the city to stay down each month. And we would appreciate that, thank you.
So I guess, I mean, I have a small business, and I applied for a business license, and I got it. And, you know, that was the end of the story. I guess what I was, what I was driving at is a business that occupies a business zone, you know, a storefront, was basically what I was driving at. So if they want to occupy a commercial property, or if they're going to occupy, you know, business zone property, it would be nice, like Mike sort of mentioned, to be aware of new businesses, so. I was going to talk about leaf and limb. And I've noticed, I've noticed in the last year that the city's position on leaf and limb pickup is starting to shift, and it's starting to move, and it's deteriorating away. I noticed in the last month's newsletter that the required dimensions of your leaf and limb pile is now three feet by four feet. I don't know if you've ever done any work or cut any limbs down, but a three feet by four feet pile of leaf and limb debris is actually on a ridiculous scale. You could pick it up, I mean, it's just, I don't know if the city's, is anybody aware of the dimensions? And where are we going with this?
According to our ordinances, it's four feet by four feet, and it is a revenue negative service that is provided by the city. We make no money, we have to pay for the labor, for the limb truck, and for the disposal of the limbs.
But we've always done that.
Well, once upon a time in the past, there was a limb fee that was included in the water bills. That is no longer the case.
Man, there's plenty in our subdivision, if you can come down there, it's huge, piled up mess of stuff. They told us that the city refused to pick it up because they charge now.
Well, if it is over four by four, the city does give an estimate, and we also allow them to go to outside projects.
I would, I would, I would love if y'all would make some kind of discussion on, you know, you know, telling these people, they got to pick this stuff, I mean, it's horrible, and it could cause problems in kids and subdivision.
Absolutely, and if you could give me the information, we can have code enforcement check it out, and give them a certain amount of time to get it.
That would be great.
And it's not, it's not a problem for the storm system to sit around.
I came, I came to the Winnetka County last year, we're down here, it's a subdivision down here. And I had an excuse on this stuff that I can see on the side of the road. And I found out from people here that, you know, they award order, and they would come and fix things up. If you look at some of the other counties, the way they do it, you know, they have this thing where it's somewhat optional. I mean, if you want the extra services or something like that, you pay, you know, so much per month for it. You use it, you use it, you don't, you don't have to pay for it. But, you know, we had, we had.
This was discussed a few months ago at a city council meeting. And Mayor and Council decided that it would stay as using the ordinance.
Oh, our subdivision just used it the other day, where we put a mile out there, and we had this little small mile of branches and everything else. You know, if you're doing it, I mean, I would stress to the city residents or, you know, our population here, you know, that we're going to provide this service, and you kind of need to go along with the rules of the rules. I used to bundle my sticks, branches and everything else, into four foot, and tie them up, put them out there, pick it up by one hand, throw it on the truck.
They, but I mean, the thing is, I mean, if, give and take a little bit, maybe, you know, that's an approach to take, I mean, if we can't abide by it, maybe we can't do it.
I'm bringing it up because I, I feel like it's a valuable service that the city provides to its citizens. Um, it's, it's one of the one tangible things that the city does for its citizens, that once it's gone, it's gone, it's not coming back. And I don't, I don't want to see that, I don't want to see that happen. And, and myself, I would be willing to kick in a couple bucks a month just to, just to keep that service on the hook. And if that would subsidize the cost of leaf and limb, um, we could, we could bring it up and entertain the idea, if money is the issue, if it's two hundred and fifty dollars a dump, you know, we could, we could find a way to keep, not only keep the service, but enhance it as well and offer, and offer that service to the citizens because us as a city can offer a much, much better rate for leaf, you know, larger leaf and limb piles to citizens. And they can pay for it and, and they can subsidize the cost of the, the leaf and limb.
If you got more than just yard business.
Yeah, right.
That's exactly what we asked that you call.
Waste management, waste management, where I came from, they, they have trucks dig in, one was for recycling, one of those for regular garbage. And then you can pay ten dollars basically a month in six month increments if you wanted to use it for your, your yard service. And those of us who clean up our yard and there's stuff like that, we wanted to use it, we paid ten dollars a month for it. Those who didn't want to do it, they can have that service available, they have to burn during the burn season.
Right.
Would you do that for folks that's got their homes that got forty, fifty foot long stretch of woods on the side of the road to spend there for two months?
You can call it in, we'll put a work order in and code enforcement will check those out. They'll give them a ample amount of time to start up what's there.
Does that person talk to you on the home?
They, they can talk to anyone.
Because I had done that and they told me that those people are not going to pick it up. Those people have to pay a fine. That's all wasn't good, but in the meantime, people's not paying the fine, but the woods are still on the side of the road, which is a hazard because right across the street is a house that's got five kids to live in and they got a sign in the front yard, drive like your kids live here. And right across the street is that wood pile that.
No, and I understand, if you give a call, we can put a work order in, there'll be a document trail in, in our system and we'll make sure that they are aware of their options. If they do not choose to do what we.
Okay, so y'all will notify us.
Yes, and we do have code enforcement in-house at this point in time that's contracted and we'll have them go out there again, give them a period of time to become, to come into compliance. If they don't, then they will be fined. And worst case scenario, if we do have to remove it, then we will place against.
I called for a couple of months and I talked to a lady that's very nice, I said, hey, can you, told her we live on Rachel Drive and there's a big wood pile on the side of the road, after the road.
And for a very long period of time, we did not have code enforcement, so that may have been a risk too.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you.
Plus it looks bad also. Not just, not just it looks bad on the property, and I would agree with, uh, I wouldn't have told Rick of the, the size of it. But it's always, I'll be honest with you, uh, if you think smart, you do three by four pile, come back and do it next week, it'll be right back by you. It's way around unless you have storm damage or something that causes a big, which you can't.
Normally what we do is put up limbs if you have in your yard a little more time if you put on the road. And we may have people cutting trees, cutting the whole tree, now that's more than just limbs.
And the, uh.
And it's cost, it's burnt cost. And, uh, how about this scenario, we got people that dump limbs from hauling it in from somewhere else. Should we get done?
So there's been some abuse of the funeral service.
And that's one, and that's one reason why the biggest, we had, had to be impressed, uh, if you, you know, sweet, uh, we had one customer that had a twelve load before the room, we need a home. He kept the truck in his home for two days.
Mr. Mayor, it would be worth it to a person living in that home to have somebody, the city, to pay to pick it up.
Well, we, we got that in place, they'll come out and look at it and tell you how much to pay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but.
Yeah, they came out, looked at it and they said that, you know, they're not going to pick it up, it's too much and those people have to pay some type of a fine.
No, it's not a fine, it's a cost, it's a cost.
A cost.
I got picking it up, planted it to the land.
In the meantime, they're not doing nothing and the, and the trees are still there, you know, thanks to subdivision, no look here.
I don't know that.
And you have to expand your code to the extent of the police telling people, you know, what you'll take and what you won't take. Again, I, I, I take it to that, and then they said flat out, not over four inches in diameter on the branches. It is.
What about the timeframe?
The timeframe, now I'm not sure that's in there, however, I will look into it and see.
I can lead to it, Bob.
Correct. And once we have code enforcement out there, they can say, this is a danger. It needs to be done within seven days, at least some kind of effort. If not, then he can be fined.
But there's no timeframe, they can say, I don't buy it, we're just sitting there and go rock.
Well, but if it's, but if it's causing a safety hazard, you're out.
There's, uh, there's people that got themselves, not just a lot. Now, if they drag all the loads out on the side of the lake, if it's just cleaned up, is the city supposed to haul it off?
No, the city should let the people know that where the, where the woods, the trees are at. Need to let them people know, they got to get it up.
Well, don't worry. Don't worry, we'll start doing that soon. You know, we just started, he just started last month and I mean, uh, uh, quite a bit to, uh, to. And, you know, and be honest with you, our new code enforcement, we asked you to please the light right now, knock on the door, let people know what's going on. He thought, he, uh, they contracted out, uh, you know, after second, third time, yes, he's needs to be, uh, fined or something, somewhere to make the thing.
Okay, I think, I hope everybody understands it's, it's offensive and a lot of people have, they might cut down trees or fruit or always supposed to hide it at the hole and flame it out. I mean, we think this is doing nothing and we've been doing it for years, so, and it started as yard waste, not fruits.
Oh, sorry, one more thing. Uh, and then, uh, just like those way down across the street, no names, but, uh, may have constantly up there, well, in the meantime, he threw his mattresses out on the road. Well, our trash people, they, if one operates, that truck goes by, gets off the track, he never steps out, he's not going to pick that up. Uh, I mean, it's just, uh, and they, I mean, it's been laying there for three weeks now.
It's still there, man.
You're right, you go by it every day. I'm just saying, those things we need to be corrected and, uh, and I hope they are to be.
Okay, what else you got?
Um, the quarterly financial statements for the departments and the budget. I was wondering, because we're approaching our budget, is, is there a report or is there a quarterly report that we're doing by department on how we're doing? And as far as the budget goes, um, as far as the balance, as far as all of that goes? Were we not privy to that information at one, at one point?
I think what you're speaking of is more a budget to actuals, where you want to see what actuals are having comparatively speaking to the budget amount, departmental, departmentally, direct.
Yes.
Yeah, we can provide that quarterly. Now, we did.